Okay, I think that the video is probably started, uh, this is being broadcast, so let's get started. And I think Bill Bell's gonna kick it off with an update on what's going on at the city. One, two, three, go.
One point of clarification, did we advertise this as a regular work session, Lisa? Do you, do you need to do official roll call is my point?
We, we advertised it as a special work session, so I don't think we need roll call.
Okay, so I'll jump right into it then. Uh, yeah, I wanted to give a quick update on business operations. We're getting a lot of questions on what's the city as an organization doing as far as service delivery? And then, uh, I'd like Blaine to give an update on the community piece, Chelsea to give an update, and then we can add any questions that council might have about anything really, uh, hopefully make sure that is satisfactory. So as the city oper- operations, we are still trying to put out communications based on the input we're receiving from all of our partners, whether it's from the county, the governor's office, uh, profits here in the community on, on food delivery, on social service type things, uh, providing necessary services, trash and recycling still going on. The cleanup site for green waste is still going on. We are looking internally, financially, just to, uh, we've gotten a little further along on identifying some ways to be frugal for the remainder of 2020. So an example is our staffing levels with seasonal employees. Uh, we're not going to be hiring all of the seasonal employees that we budgeted for, uh, for this year. We have had great input from our department heads and our supervisors on ways we can product, uh, products created and service delivery done for our community, you know, temporary manner that reduce burden of seasonals about a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand worth of savings by not hiring all those seasonals. It doesn't mean long-term seasonal because we do. It just means that we're not going to be maintaining certain things in our community, uh, as much as we had in the past, uh, or in the same fashion. So an example of that would be for our parks maintenance, uh, we're going to do a little bit less irrigation than we normally would do because that will help, uh, retard the growth of the grass in all of our turf areas. We're going to go to a, uh, reduced maintenance schedule that means mowing less often. Uh, and so we don't need as many people for that. And we're going to purchase, I think it's about five thousand dollars worth of tools and, and small equipment like leaf blowers and weed whackers, those types of things. So we can have individuals, uh, doing grounds maintenance throughout the park system, by themselves rather than assigning big work teams that go and do it and share equipment. We're gonna try to do that in a safe manner where they're not sharing equipment with other staff members. And then, of course, our staff members are trying to follow the mask guidelines put out by the governor's office. And, uh, we're trying to do that to the best of our ability to keep not only our employees safe, but the public safe, to keep down the transmission levels of the virus anytime they have to work in teams or they work in close proximity to the public. So, uh, please know we're doing that. Uh, we shouldn't notice a huge, um, our goal is to reduce our maintenance to a level that saves us a little bit of money, uh, protects our employees, uh, allowing them to work individually, but not reduce our maintenance enough that it causes us long-term problems. Cause once you lose, uh, a park system or a golf course, for example, once the turf, uh, goes downhill too far, you can't get it back, uh, unless you spend a lot of money, sometimes a million dollars, honestly, at a golf course, for example. If you lose a golf course, it's, it's upwards of a million dollars to get that turf back. And so, uh, please know staff's working on that. It's every day, new ideas coming forward. I really want to give a shout out to Jim Shid and to our new parks director Jackie, uh, coming up with some great ideas and to our streets crews who are willing to provide some support for the parks crews and, and vice versa. And so they're sharing duties, they're, they're helping each other out. Uh, the Black Canyon Golf Course, we're doing all of the facilities maintenance there. And we've shut down all the operations trying to keep people safe. Uh, we, we've not allowed golf carts at any courses in town to keep people, uh, to golfing on a walking basis only because you're more apt to not congregate if you're out walking golfing than if you're riding with somebody in a cart. And so we're, it's not business as usual, so we don't want it to look like it's business as usual. But with that, we needed some support for our golf professional, Tom Young. Uh, he didn't have enough staff because we're not fully operational on the business ops side of things at the golf course. We know that we're not doing our, we've just announced we're not gonna do our competitive baseball program in the same way that we've done it before, and we had just hired a competitive sports coordinator to help with that. And so he's now gonna be helping over at the golf course and help provide some support to the golf professional to make sure that the community members can use the Black Canyon Golf Course, but they can do it in a, uh, stabilized, non-chaotic fashion. So tee times, uh, some organization, and, uh, Tom now has some support. We also had, uh, an employee from the utilities division that's gone over and actually, uh, is very thankful to get off his couch because he was one of the ones that was asked to stay home and not come in and work unless it's an on-call emergency basis. And I think from talking to him this weekend when I was at the course, he's very excited to be out. He's wearing a mask and doing it in a safe manner, but he's excited to be out among people and, uh, helping over at the golf course. So just, and I think that was Ann's idea. So there's a lot of people coming up with some great ideas and it's just been really fun to watch. It's been really stressful on our staff, but at the same time, uh, a really rewarding experience to see everyone come together and be able to provide the necessary services to the community, just in a non-traditional fashion. So that's what I wanted to highlight as far as business ops. Otherwise, nothing really has changed, uh, as, as far as service delivery since the last time we gave an update and, um, turn it back over to the mayor.
Thanks, Bill. Um, I think Blaine is up next.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I don't have much else to add from, uh, the last call here, but just a quick recap. Uh, Montrose County now has fifty-four confirmed COVID-19 cases, and we've had four deaths in the community as a result of this. We've been over five hundred citizens tested. To kind of put that, uh, maybe in a, a, a better framework in comparison, on the western slope, we are the second community that has the most infections, only behind Gunnison, uh, which is now over one hundred. So we have twenty more infections, at least known infections, than Mesa County that has a population that is three to four times our size. And so it is really, really important, if you could once again stress to all of your fam- family members, friends, coworkers, as city, um, employees, we should be wearing masks if we absolutely have to go out for essential travel. I had to go pick up a prescription, um, over the weekend and I was at Target. And honestly, I was kind of appalled at all the individuals that were leisurely shopping around Target, not wearing masks and, uh, just, it was just another Saturday. So I still think a lot of members of our community aren't, uh, getting the message. And as city employees and city representatives, we should be setting the example because modeling behavior is, is oftentimes how people, uh, do it. So I'll, I'll turn it back over to you unless anyone has any more questions.
Blaine, how's our police force doing? I saw a headline in the paper yesterday, I think. Sounds like you guys are busier than normal. How are you guys doing physically, emotionally? Um, just a little concerned about our police department and how they're, I mean, they're great folks, don't get me wrong. I'm just concerned about their safety.
Yeah, I think like everybody else, uh, they're, they're certainly stressed. Uh, we have, you know, ramped up our use of PPE. Uh, we've now mandated that if you're inside the police department and you leave your workspace, because we've all segregated each other in our own workspaces. You probably saw some pictures in the paper that there's only supposed to be one officer per one room within the police department, and that if you get up from your workspace, you're gonna put your mask on. Um, I think we had a little bit of a false sense of security that, uh, when we come inside the police department, we're safe. And, uh, that's absolutely not the case because we are dealing with individuals in the community. Uh, we have some very clear examples that we've dealt with some individuals that, uh, were dispatched as positives. And so we have to be really careful. Um, other than that, our police officers are doing well. They're strong. Um, you know, I think that there, there, there's a certain amount of stress, um, just like everyone else is feeling. But, uh, overall, I think things are good and we have a strong peer support team. And I reminded everyone of that peer support team the other day. Um, and, uh, I know that we also have some other options like telehealth support, uh, and things like that. But overall, I think things are good and our department is, is really responding well. Thank you for asking.
Good to hear that. Um, like council, does anybody else have any questions for, uh, Bill or Blaine? Before, I think we'll probably move to Chelsea next, I think. Any questions for Bill or Blaine? I don't want to cut anybody from council off.
I have questions for Bill, if this is an okay time.
Yes, please, Judy.
Um, first of all, could you please tell us the name of the new sports coordinator that was hired?
Yes, Chris Everson.
Okay. And so is this a he?
Yes.
And he's already started, but he's finished first to the golf course for right now?
Yes, he started actually today. Um, we had, he'll, he was gonna start a while ago, but he was quarantined up in San Miguel County. His sister lives up there, so he's now, um, so he was able to move down here and get situated and, and start helping us out today.
Thank you. So going on with that whole line, I have heard there's been some discontent at the golf course with people being rather rude and, and saying things to the staff there, particularly to Tom Young. Is there anything we can do to help with that? Can we have, I don't know, the school resource office, police officer over there? Can some of us volunteer to go over and be there so that Tom's not taking the blunt of this?
So I think, uh, we appreciate that offer. But I think with the addition of, um, Justin from the utilities and with Chris going over to help Tom out, that will help reduce Tom's stress level. Tom's so used to being the golf professional that people want to come talk to because he's very friendly and, and has a really good following at the course. It's hard to do that and be the starter and the marshal all at the same time. By getting some help, I think that should have resolved itself in the last couple of days. Honestly, in a public meeting, I'm just gonna throw it out there because it's the honest truth. Uh, golfers at every course in Montrose have been very difficult. And there's been a handful at each of the courses who, uh, are members who just have not been supportive of the community's efforts to protect our citizens. And they've been verbally abusive to city staff. And I'll just leave it at that. But then to say, if you hear from people, um, please just help us by reiterating the importance of social distancing. And if you're over seventy-five years old and you're asked not to go out and golf in your golf cart for the next three weeks, you're probably not going, it's not the end of the world for you. It's an inconvenience. But don't follow social distancing. Um, you could have many more issues to deal with than not being able to drive your cart around. So that's been, for me and a couple other staff members, the most difficult thing to work with has been golfers from all of the courses, not just ours. The professionals have been very supportive, uh, they're at each of the courses, the, uh, Cabo Creek have been supportive. They understand what the city has to do, what the governor's recommending that we do, and they appreciate it. But they're also getting beaten up by their own membership. And so it's been a really difficult time. So I appreciate you offering to help. But I think right now anyway, the best would just be word of mouth, help provide support for social distancing.
You know, Doug and I were out there Wednesday playing and, and Wednesday was as crowded maybe as I've ever seen Black Canyon Golf Course. And part of the issue is lots of people are taking it not, are going out and using the golf course because particularly last week, it was really nice weather. And, and Tom was the only one out there working. The Judy who is his, uh, assistant out there has a medical issue, so she's not able to work. So Tom's out there by himself and Ann came out on Wednesday and I sensed that that sort of helped things. And I, with, with a couple more people out there starting today, I think the problem will, will help take care of itself because I think Tom just needs that support. But it's, it's amazing. There are more, in my opinion, I, I can't, I, it's gonna be interesting to see the actual numbers at the next golf advisory committee meeting. But I think April has been just huge for the golf course, much busier than normal.
And I'll just, if it's okay, chime in here too and mention that day when I saw you, Mayor Bowman. I think we had over ninety rounds of golf that day. Um, so that's comparable to a busy summer weekend. So people are using the golf course and, um, there's also been a transition right now in operations. We're asking everyone to book a tee time online. And so, um, councilperson files, I think that we've been hearing a little bit of pushback from that as well. That's a new thing for members to book online. And so the first time people do that is always a challenge and a change. And so we're trying to work with people to get used to that system. Um, but again, it's one of these efficiencies that we're learning about that some people now enjoy doing because they get all of that settled before, um, they show up. So, um, thanks for all the feedback. And if you have additional ideas, those of you who are out there at the course or hearing from people, please let us know. But, um, we think that we have a better help there for now. And then as, um, Bill said, as we transition into the different tiers, we'll be able to potentially bring more staff back. But this, this is where we're at for right now.
And I will say that the new online registration system is, is pretty straightforward, easy to use. Um, kudos to everybody that helped design that. I, I've used it several times now. And, and I think it's, the, the system works very well.
I would just comment, the other day when Dave and I were out there playing, uh, it was interesting looking at the mix of people that were there and nobody was in a hurry. There weren't groups pushing anybody or shoving folks on or out of the way or anything. It was moving very, very pleasant, uh, rate of speed and everybody seemed to be enjoying themselves and acting as if they didn't have anywhere else to go when they finished.
If I can just add, uh, we had a question about revenue. So we are charging now. And when you do the online tee time reservation, I also want to echo, it's working really well. When I went on there, uh, Connor and I went out Saturday. It asks if you're a member or not, and then it walks you through the system. And if you need to pay, you just pay online as well. And then when I got there to check in, uh, Justin was there and he actually had an iPad right there to help you pay if you needed to pay and to walk you through that system. And so it seems to be working and, and hopefully we're, we're able to capture a little bit of revenue. We're thinking that people just have more time on their hands. Golf takes a lot of time. So that could be the reason that people are just out.
Bill was also mentioning that they're gonna be putting a little bit better and more clear signage on the course to ensure that there's hopefully a little better social distancing for groups that are actually out on the course.
Yeah, it seems like every day we're creating more signage for all our different public facing divisions, whether it's parks and playgrounds. I've noticed people are disregarding that playgrounds are closed at the moment. Uh, the same thing at the golf course. So Kaylee's really helped from OBT, uh, with signage and we're continuing to put more signage up just to encourage that social distancing.
Any more questions for Bill or anybody have a question for Blaine? If not, I think it's probably Chelsea's turn.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we did talk a little bit about, you know, what's been happening and what we're doing with business services, um, during bagels with Bill and the last time we met. And so I thought I might give you an update sort of specifically as to how things are going with the program that you all approved, um, a couple of weeks ago and where we are. And so last week, we were able to fund three loans, um, so far. And then this week, we're looking to be able to fund possibly six, but at least three that have been approved by our loan committee. So they're coming in, um, we're working the process with the loan committee. It's going really well virtually. Um, we've had just a few things about, you know, with signing documents and things like that that we're working out. But for the most part, it's been a really smooth process and everybody's worked together really well to ensure that we're getting that cash, um, in the hands of business owners. And I wanted to thank Shaney too and her team just really turning that around. I mean, mailing checks on the weekend and things like that so that businesses can get money in the bank as soon as possible. So the process is working well. Um, we're thinking that we would see a few more loan applications by now. And so, um, we're just gonna do a little extra push this week on marketing the program as well as the, uh, cooperative marketing grants. And speaking of which, the marketing grants have been coming in, in a little bit more rapid of a pace. I think we've got close to six of those applications right now. Each of them is really unique. I'm loving seeing these businesses come together. A great example is that, uh, Pick Place has put in an application with, uh, with a bunch of other providers. And so they're gonna be working together to market, um, all, you know, together as one group that people should still be seeking healthcare even during this time for other issues aside from COVID that people are still afraid, um, to see their doctor at this time. They're a little worried about it. And so with telehealth and those options, they're working together with our marketing grant to market, um, that. So that's something that's really interesting and unique. And then we've got some other businesses who are partnering together. And so we're seeing that take off and a lot of businesses, um, taking advantage of that. So that's something that's been really great. Um, I've been speaking with a lot of the restaurant owners and checking in with them on a regular basis to see how things are going, coffee shop owners, that type of thing. Um, the general sentiment is that they are making it, that the lights are staying on, that they're able to, some of them employ a few people, some of them are just working themselves, um, and not taking in a salary, but they're able to keep the doors open. And they're, they've thanked the city for the efforts that we've made with the dine-in, with takeout and some of the other things because that's really helping. And they've noticed an uptick on Fridays especially, um, in their sales. And so I think the overall sentiment is that it's working, um, as best as, as it can in these times and that the business owners are grateful. So that's really the update that I have at this time and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can you tell me how quickly we're being able to turn around those five thousand dollar business loans and how that partnership with Region Ten is working? And how often we're cutting checks?
Yes. So the first three probably took the longest that any of them will take as we were establishing the process. Region Ten, it, um, is really backed up as well. They have a lot going on. And so now if we, we as a team can accept a loan application and if it has everything that it's supposed to have, is, you know, all the documentation that it needs, we can submit it to Region Ten within twenty-four hours of receiving it. And we've been able to do that. And then it typically takes Region Ten twenty-four to forty-eight hours to turn things back around. Sometimes there's questions back and forth. Then we are issuing checks on Thursdays. So it's once a week. And so we've been working really hard as a team to try to get everything over to finance, including signed loan documents, a loan closing, a memo of the checklist that we discussed with, um, you and the other council members of how, you know, we're documenting the process. We've been able to turn that around and try to get checks out once a week on Thursdays. So to answer your question, um, three to five days, seven at the longest for each loan, depending on how much back and forth.
Any other questions for Chelsea? Again, Chelsea, I just want to say, I think you're doing a fantastic job, well, with the daily updates, um, letting council know what's going around, going on with the loan program. Um, I'm sure you are very, very busy right now, but, uh, you're doing a really fantastic job. I thank you. And I think that's it for agenda items. Those were the three reports we were, uh, looking at. So guess we'll go around and, and let staff say what they want to say and then, uh, council. And, um, let's just touch base, uh, so that everybody knows what's going on on Wednesday. Um, and then we'll see everybody on Wednesday. So staff, Jim, how's things going at Public Works?
We're doing good. Um, you know, operationally, we're doing as much as we can, you know, with the restrictions in place. Um, definitely focusing on our critical activities and, and we are accomplishing those. I mean, mainly streets and parks are the, the ones that we've, uh, recently, um, kind of come back into as much as we can. Um, definitely focusing on the critical items and, and trying to just be safe about what we're doing. You know, it's difficult for all of us. We're, you know, we're all programmed for efficiency and productivity. And, and at these times, that's kind of not our focus, you know, we're, we're focusing on getting the critical items done and, and maybe not in the way that we have trained ourselves to do. So, um, new and different, but we're, we're getting the job done. So, um, I'd be happy to go into any details of, of any of it if you'd like. But, um, basically, um, streets and parks are, uh, focusing on critical activities only.
Gotcha. Are we able to do any road repair at this point? Or, I mean, everybody thinks this would be a great time to do it since nobody's driving. And your folks can work.
Yeah, we, we are. So we are in our, uh, crack seal crew in-house. Um, um, they, we would normally do that in-house, uh, every year. Um, probably just slower than we normally do. We've, uh, decreased the crew size so that they're not working closely together. Um, and, but they are crack sealing roads right now, um, per our plan for 2020. Um, and then we are also doing, um, pothole repair and patching as needed. Um, probably again, focusing on the critical ones, um, maybe not getting to some of the smaller areas and the less important, uh, less impactful areas as quickly. Uh, but we are still doing those items. We just have to deal with a smaller crew.
Great, great. Anybody else have any questions for Jim?
Yeah, I was gonna ask how the new bridge is doing.
Um, you know, actually Scott might be able to update better on that. I, um, I heard it was completed, but I'll let Scott fill you in there. Go ahead, Scott. This would be a great time for a roundabout, Scott. Come on.
Sure, yeah. Why didn't we wait a year? Yeah. Yeah, you want me to just dive into kind of all project updates, including?
Please, please do. That'd be great.
Um, so yeah, the bridge is done. Um, it'll be open today. So that's about, uh, two weeks ahead of schedule. Um, there'll be a press release going out. The only hiccup they had was the, uh, guardrails were, um, the fabricator for guardrails kind of got tied up with all the COVID stuff. So, um, we put concrete jersey barriers down each side for now, um, so it's safe and so that we can open it. And then, uh, um, those should be showing up. It might be another month and a half or so, but, um, not a big deal. The bridge will be fully open and functional. And then when they put those in, um, they'll just do, uh, flaggers and a shoulder closure. So, um, no more closures needed. Um, it'll be open for the, for the long haul. So, um, so that one can be very good, uh, under budget. And, uh, we're actually able to expand the work to include the sidewalk replacement also. Um, just kind of made sense once we got in there and realized just how bad of shape all of that was in. Um, it's got a brand new sidewalk too, so.
Great.
Um, a couple other ones, uh, out on East Miami, uh, we finished the water line about a month ago. Um, and that got, has been reopened. Um, there's a little bit of patchwork that they're waiting for the asphalt plants to open up. So, um, they'll be closing that on Wednesday through Friday to get all that final patching done. And that'll be the last on that project. And this one out there by the Museum of the Mountain West. Um, that one came in pretty significantly under budget as well, so that, um, came together nicely. Uh, they're going full steam ahead up at Sero, um, still targeting to start filling in the middle of next month. So, uh, so they're getting close. The irrigation water is coming, um, in a couple of days. So, um, getting all the bypass pipes and stuff in place and ready to go. Uh, River Bottom is paving next week. Uh, and, uh, should have that open, um, by the end of the next week, so by the twenty-fourth-ish, um, plus or minus a few days. So, uh, we've, that project was on, kind of on the side. So I guess in general, talking all projects, you know, we figure a lot of these were in for the long haul. And so a lot of them are pretty close to finishing. And River Bottom's a good example of that, where we're close enough to the finish line, um, that, you know, we're elements of the stay-at-home order. Um, so figuring we might be in this for a while to get those done and open to the public so that they can use our perks and benefit from those, um, safely. So, um, so that should be open pretty soon. Use our parks and benefit from those um safely, so um so that should be open pretty soon. And then uh the contract award on the Westman Underpass that you guys did a couple of months ago, or a month ago or so. Um, they're uh gonna be starting the shot creep work this Wednesday under there. Um, they're only gonna be in in there probably about a week and a half, um and it'll be reopened on the weekend, so. You'll see the underpass at West Main closing on Wednesday, um to finish all of that and get that safe and buttoned up. Um, they'll reopen at the weekend and then finish up the following week, and uh. Uh, still, you know, we had problems with the, this is that specialty contractor we hired, they've been doing great. Um, still not sure on the schedule and the general contractors, some of their finished up stuff like the painting and all of that, so. Um, that's still in limbo, um they had uh some COVID cases. I'm on the front range with their crew, but that's kinda tied them up from coming back to our project supposedly, so. Working through that, but we're kinda approaching all of that to get in and get out and minimize the trail closures, but again. Getting it safe and in place, cause you know, this trail will be important through the summer, so. As as the pandemic continues. I think that's it for the projects going on right now, any questions?
Jim, can we come back to you for an update on a a new Parks Director?
Yeah, yeah, I just replied to that chat, but um yes, we do have a new Parks Superintendent, his name is Jackie. Um, he's been here a couple of weeks now, um kinda started right as we um were transitioning into this new operation, so he's. Um, it's been a difficult start, but uh he's he's been a great help already. Um, he's getting along very well with the team and and uh we're very excited to have him, he's been very helpful already, only been here. Uh, a couple of weeks, so yeah, his name is Jackie, and um I'm sure you guys will all get to meet him at some point.
Some point in the future.
Yeah, hopefully, and probably over video for a while, but.
All right. Uh, Stephen Alcorn, uh you're on my screen, actually you're not on my screen, but I see your name.
I'm not sure why I'm not on your screen. Uh, Matt Magliaro started today, uh he uh he didn't get very far before Blaine had already uh. Got him uh working on some projects and we're trying to uh. It is really weird to integrate a new employee without even a handshake or, you know. A visible smile, uh so i- it's kind of a, it's an odd one for all of us, but uh. Uh, he showed up and already uh where. Hi, and I'm not sure what court he thought was open today, but um he's gonna be a big uh big addition to us. And really help Blaine and the commanders out a lot.
Great. Um, Shaney, anything you wanna say to us?
Um, yeah, good morning, so we are basically just working um as normal as we can from remote. Remote locations, we do have to go to City Hall occasionally, um but for the most part, the team is doing great, uh the C S Ts have really rolled with the. The modifications and changes we needed to make for the phone system. Um, and then implementing these new programs, everybody's been very supportive, so, thank you.
David Breeze, anything?
Um, nothing uh major, continued to provide water and sewer service to everybody, um. Thanks largely to all of the preventive maintenance and stuff that had been done over the last few years and last several years. Keeping things up to, you know, fixing those problem areas before they get out of hand, so. Um, other than that, it's just um responding to all of the one call, you know, locates and all of that to try to keep contractors. That are still working and getting their stuff done without hitting any of our lines and causing uh major problems.
Great. Um, Chelsea, can you talk to us about the mural project?
Sure, I would love to, that's a bit of happy news, and so um again, the mural is. Uh, we're looking at putting it under the West Main Bridge as part of the Connect Trail Project, and so. Um, that project came in under budget and we had actually an artist in the community approach us about creating this mural. Which sort of started the conversation about doing it, and then we looked and there was budget left over to be able to fund a mural potentially. So we're working on um what you might have seen on social media over the weekend and in the newspaper is. Community input that we would ordinarily do in person, um talking about what the community would like to see in a mural, do they wanna see landscape or historical? Or something more abstract um to complete their connect trail and the experience that they have in using it. Um, if you've been down there, you might have seen that that area and other areas under the bridge are completely covered in graffiti. And so this mural um once commissioned and complete would be covered with an anti-graffiti sealant. Um, so if there were to be graffiti over it, we would be able to easily wash it off. Um, to complete the process, we'll be doing a call for artists, um once we learn the scope of what the community wants out of the mural. Um, we'll do a call for artists and um council has said that they would like to hire locally, and so we will be looking at local artists. Um, to commission for this mural, and once we complete that process. We should see the mural probably painted and up, hopefully by June, um if not sooner.
Great. Uh, Michaela, anything for us?
Nothing new to add for me, nope.
All right, just wanna give everybody a turn, Anne, anything you'd like to add?
Nothing else to add, thank you.
All right, Anne, thanks for getting all those masks done, and and I've seen you wear them at the golf course and Tom, and. Thanks for taking that on. Let's see who else. Uh, I think that, anybody else from staff have anything they'd like to add? Bill, anything you'd like to add?
Ooh, can I take it back and say one thing, I just um, thanks just one thing, which is um. Just a shout out really quick to our awesome clerks division, um now that the election is over, um just to say thank you, thank you, they. Um, did a ton of work and adjusted operations um as necessary for the COVID crisis and. Did it all in a way that I don't think any of us on the outside would have noticed that things were different, so. Lisa, Michaela, thanks to you and your team and Mark, and as I mentioned on Bagels with Bill. Kara from the Pavilion turned into a clerk, an election judge, um for us in order to get the election done in a speedy way, so. Um, thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, everyone, thank you, Anne.
Anybody else on staff? Bill, anything for uh to go to the order?
No, I appreciate Anne saying that, that was the only one I thought we might have been missing was just to thank Lisa and her team for getting us through a. Uh, difficult election, very strange one because of the circumstances, so say thank you for all of that. Uh, time and energy that was put into that, otherwise I can answer any questions, I've covered everything, I think, from my perspective.
Then it's council's turn. Who wants to jump in? Judy Anne, go ahead.
Thank you, so Bill, I know that there was definite reasons to declare the emergency as early as we did. And part of that has to do is that has us qualify for FEMA funds and different federal assistance. What we, how, what will we see from that?
So all of our time that's spent, uh the hourly employees that are spending time on COVID-related jobs, so. We repositioned our office on business and tourism, as Chelsea mentioned, to promote. Things within our community, to do a lot of graphics and signage. Uh, to inform the community about COVID and social distancing and all those types of things, to keep people safe in the community. Uh, any redirected efforts um with police department personnel uh to support the COVID efforts. Uh, all those things are being documented on time sheets. Under COVID um account number, and that way we can submit that for reimbursement. And so we've had Kendall, our grant coordinator, working with um police chief. And Kathy Kinkle from the police department, and a couple other people who are really. Uh, keeping tabs on the forms and documents that need to be provided to FEMA when this is all over. And so they're doing a good job of of doing that internally, and then uh Dola keeps coming out with new information. And our FEMA regional representative comes out with information for us, and so they're keeping track of all those things. So that's on the reimbursement side, uh the other big reason to do it early was just that was the recommendation. Uh, coming down from the governor friend and uh people who cut it early and started social distancing early. Uh, hopefully made a positive impact on their community uh long-term. Variety of reasons why we did that.
Can we also ask for reimbursement for the revenue we lost during the, when the golf course couldn't charge?
Now, lost revenues aren't an eligible expense. Uh, under that particular program, it's hard costs associated with your reaction to the emergency.
Thank you.
Anybody, Barbara, something?
Yeah, sure, I'm gonna put my parent hat on for a second, a Montrose High School senior. Um, I started a program last week to raise money to put yard signs in front of every um Montrose High School seniors' house that said. Proud home of a Montrose High School graduate, and I'm almost at the number I need to be able to buy three hundred yard signs. And recycling a lot of the um wires from council candidate races, so. Um, that is a personal project I'm working on, and if you have any questions or anything, let me know, um but I'm really excited to do that for our high school seniors.
Great idea, do you, will the seniors be able to have their traditional senior lock-in party, do you know?
Currently, everything is canceled or postponed, so the senior safe party is up in the air. Plans for graduation are up in the air, um you probably know, but the school district has canceled all in-person learning for the rest of the school. Year, and um we're kind of, as parents, we're waiting to hear what that means for. A graduation, there's been talk, I think, of having something in the summer. Um, and whether or not there ends up being a senior safe party to go with that is is a, is a big question mark. Unfortunately, a big fundraiser for that is a golf tournament that had been canceled because of COVID, so. Not only is the question mark about if it'll happen, but um my understanding is the fundraising for it came to a a halt, so. We don't really know.
Thanks for the info.
Yeah.
Roy?
Yeah, I uh first wanted to ask Jim if he would pass along our gratitude and thanks to the. Um, Public Works folks who are picking up trash and doing recycling, it's just been going along. As if nothing else is happening, and and I know that that's not the case, and it's a big effort. And some cities in Colorado are having a lot of difficulty, so I wanna applaud the work they're doing and thank them. And also I wanted to thank Lisa, um the election actually, you know, we think of it as being last week, but it's been going on since January. And she's done with her team an amazing job to make that all a very smooth operation, and um. And I know I'm pleased with the results, and uh and finally, I wanted to um. Commend uh Chief Hall. For keeping the pressure up on the community to observe all the um. The distancing and staying at home and those things, I think people sometimes, it's easy to get a little lax and forget. And we need those reminders, um that disease continues to kill people and is so easy to spread, so. Thanks for your efforts and the whole police department, I think they're all doing a terrific job, and it's just so critically important. And I know as a person in that uh high-risk category, I really appreciate it, so thanks again, that's all.
Doug?
I'd just like to s- make certain that we continue to thank the staff, and particularly the department heads, because it's taken a lot of effort on their part. To uh meet all the requirements, and I think we're still making all of the the city run on excellent path. So I I think we just wanna continue to thank them and uh the department heads for the effort that they're putting out. And the extra work that they're having to do, thank you.
Dave Frank, are you out there?
Yes, um I just wanted to echo Roy's comments about the the police department doing such a great job of. Reinforcing the severity of the consequences of not following social distancing. And the social media campaign that they're using to educate the public, I think has been spot-on. It's helping to relieve a lot of tension and a lot of anxiety to know exactly what the city is doing and why. So I wanted to salute you, Chief, you're doing a great job, and the staff as well. For letting the city know what we're doing and how it's working out so well for us and why, thank you very much.
Great, um, I don't have anything other than to say thanks to all of our staff one more time. Uh, and I won't be the last time in the next several months I say this, but uh we all appreciate everything the city employees are doing. Um, and I know that, you know, talking to folks, everybody appreciates your efforts. Um, last thing I would like to do is circle the wagons here so we all know what we're doing Wednesday morning. Uh, city council will be meeting for our annual training session and sort of get organized for the next twelve months. I believe we are starting at nine o'clock, is that right, Lisa Del Piccolo?
Yes, we are planning to start at nine AM, um we're working on fine-tuning the agenda and the presentation, but um we're on schedule for Wednesday.
Okay, so we'll see everybody right here at uh nine o'clock Wednesday morning, and.
I think it's nine thirty, it is on my calendar anyway, Lisa.
Okay, I will update, um.
Lisa, if you'll, when you get the agenda finalized, just I guess email all of that to us and we'll turn on our computers at the right time.
Okay, sounds good.
I had nine thirty as well.
Okay. We'll look forward to the email and I'll see everybody at. Wednesday morning unless there's something, somebody wants to say. Going once, twice, Judy Anne? Are you waving goodbye, or? Wasn't sure what that meant.
You're saying you're gonna see everybody Wednesday, no, sorry, you don't get to see me.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
Maybe you would just have some pearls of wisdom for us.
Yeah, sure, uh but I will see you next Tues- uh next Tuesday.
Wait for tomorrow, we'll see you then.
Yes.
Alrighty then, I'll say goodbye, go ahead, don't forget to sign off, Barbara?
Don't, don't we have a work session next Monday or not? But, I mean, don't we always have a work session before council?
I would assume so, and we can talk about that on Wednesday.
So maybe Judy Anne is not planning on going to that, I guess it could go either way, it doesn't really matter, I just. Sorry, when she just said next Tuesday, I thought, wait, I, there's a meeting Monday, but.
I'll check the agenda, and if there's something for work session that I'd like to be involved in, I'll be there, if not, I'll be there Tuesday.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification, thank you, anything else? We stand adjourned, I'll see y'all on Wednesday, bye.